Want to make sure that. All right, she usually. Happy New Year, everyone. Let's go ahead and start the. January twenty six. Planning Commission meeting and we'll go ahead and start with the roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Commissioner Norensek.
Here.
Commissioner Conse is not in the meeting at this point.
We'll update everyone when she gets here. All right, with that, then the next item on the agenda is public comments and these are for items that aren't on the agenda. What we try to do is make. If there's an item or an issue that we should know about or get feedback on, we hear about it here. We always make time in the beginning of the meeting. So I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section for item. For item number two on the agenda for public comments. These are for items that are not on the agenda. All right, I don't see anybody waving or asking to be heard on this one, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section. And bring it back to the commission for. For the next item, the approval of minutes from the December first meeting. I didn't see anything to update. Does anyone else see anything?
I don't think I was there, so I think I have to recuse on this one or abstain or whatever I do.
Minutes look good to me.
You were, you voted.
Oh, good, then I then everything looks great.
Oh, such a professional. All right, I need a motion, that is a motion.
I move.
All right, so I move second.
Second.
I'll second, I'll second. Roll call, please.
Caroline.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Norensek.
Yes.
Commissioner Conse is absent.
All right, good, then we'll go ahead with item. The fourth items on the agenda are A, B, C, and D, and let me go over how we approach all of these. On each item, we'll go ahead and start with an overview from staff. And then any questions from the commission back to staff and then we'll open up public comment. And I'll go ahead and hear from the applicant first or the representative. And then anyone else who would like to speak on the topic and then we'll close the public hearing, bringing it back to the commission for action and. Discussion and action as appropriate. So with that, I'll go ahead and. We'll start with item four A, which is special special structures permit on two ninety three Stockbridge Avenue. Who has this one? Stephanie, you on this one?
Ralph.
All right, good. All right, Ralph, you want to go then?
Yes, thank you so much, Shirley. Good evening, Commissioners. So two nine three Stockbridge is a roughly one acre. Flag lot along Stockbridge Ave here. This front property line here runs parallel to Stockbridge Auburn along the rear of the neighboring property at two nine one Stockbridge. The lot, as we're going to see in a moment, is pretty shallow considering its overall size with a depth of one hundred and forty four feet. The typical minimum lot depth in action is two hundred feet for comparison. And you'll see it adjoining to a three Stockbridge, the affected area where there is a another flag lot with the driveway coming up into a driveway. Area, the neighboring property. The homeowner here is proposing to build a new seven hundred and seventy nine square foot carport in the local scene here. And here's a better site plan, again, showing the lot dimensions as well as the location of the pros carport. This carport will be located at the required front setback distance for the main residence. Which is allowed based on section seventeen forty zero five zero of the Atherton Municipal Code. So as I mentioned, and we have a lot up to one hundred and forty four feet, which thirty percent of that gets us to forty three feet and a little over two inches for the required front setback. Which is where the carport will be located. It'll otherwise maintain the required side and rear setbacks, so just over eleven feet on the side and roughly seventy feet for the rear setback. This carport is going to be screened by some existing trees along the side property here. And a landscape screening plan will be included and required as part of the eventual building permit process. Quickly, here's a couple of notes on the site. There's an existing two story residence, pool and a driveway. The carport will make use of an existing driveway, no new paved surface will be added to accommodate the carport here. Quickly, a couple of notes on the. Dimensions of the carport, it's going to be openly open on all sides, so making use of the exemption for open covered area. So regarding height setbacks and floor area, the carport is in conformance with all other development. Standards in the town of Atherton, which makes it comply with condition B for granting a special structures permit. Regarding the addition A impact on neighboring properties. We find based on adjoining similar uses, the distance from neighboring properties. And the screening that is in place and will be provided as part of the building permit, that this also meets that first condition. For the special structures permit. And finally, the third condition that it's consistent with the objectives of general. We find it's consistent with land use policy one point five with. Uses to be designed in accordance with the density for air ratio, height book and other standards established by the town. And as mentioned, all applicable other applicable development codes. And life and safety codes apply in this case. Public notice was mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet of this application. No public comment was received. I am not aware of what outreach the applicant may have done, but they are here prepared to speak in that little. Additional detail on the project and can speak to whether they received any feedback from neighbors, but so far we have not received any. Yeah, staff is here prepared to answer any additional questions. Town Arbor's as well, although no trees will be impacted as part of this project, no TPZs or tree removals required, so. She'll likely speak more on her second item, so I'll yield back to you, Chair Lane, and to our eventually our applicant.
Great, any questions of staff by the commission?
No. No.
Yeah, all right, very, very good, then I'll go ahead and. Open the public comment section. We'll start with the applicant or the representative. David, do you represent yourself on this one?
Yeah, but I believe that I have my architecture is Cynthia, you on the phone?
Yes, we are here. Cynthia Munoz from Stecker and Northway Architects and Kathleen Lilly, Project Manager. I apologize, our camera is acting up. But we are behind the logo. But I appreciate Ralph's very thorough overview and it seems like the project is pretty straightforward, so would just. Simply be happy to be here to answer any questions that the commissioners or public may have.
All right, any questions?
None for me.
It looks pretty straightforward.
Yep.
All right, and then David, did you need to add anything to that?
No, I have talked to the neighbor that, right, who has a lot in front of me, so to speak, Don, and he's fine. He has his own carport. I did. The people that bought built the house next door. They built it and bought it a year ago. They've not been in the house in the last, they haven't moved in yet, believe it or not. And I've not made contact with them. Okay, I tell you, but I do know that those were sent to them. But they're not, I never seen them. Kind of interesting. You know, it must be nice to be able to pay twenty million dollars for a house and not have to move into it.
Yes. Amazing.
All right, David, just for the record, would you introduce yourself just to make sure you're on record?
Yeah, my name is David B. Wright. And I've lived this house since, Wendy and I have lived in the house since. Two thousand and seven. We bought it under, it was under new construction at the time when we finished it off. And but we've been a part of talent Atherton for that long too, this point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this topic? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action appropriate. This one seemed straightforward. I went to visit the site and they got a great gate and that's about all I saw. So it does, there won't be any impact on anybody that I can see based on what I saw, so.
You can bring your Corvette over anytime you want.
Yeah. I forget it. All right, then, anyone else have a comment?
I'm happy to make the motion. I thank you for approaching your neighbors. I think that's great. It doesn't sound like no one's here. It sounds to me like. Like, and if staff is encouraging us or at least supporting this, then I'm. I'm good to make the motion unless someone else wants to.
Harry or Nancy, anything on this one?
No, I'm fine with it.
No comments, thank you.
Okay, all right, and move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit to allow a detached accessory building. Carport to have the same front yard setback as the main residence at two ninety three Stockbridge Avenue. Based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the special structure permit certificate.
All right, second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Caroline.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Norensek.
Yes.
All right, David, you got your carport and have fun and.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
But thank you, David.
Thank you.
Happy new, happy new to you.
Happy New Year.
All right, next, next item is item four B, which is the hair retrieve removal permit at one elm place request. We'll go ahead and do the same procedure on this. Start with an overview of the, this, from the staff, then questions of the. Commission to the staff and then we'll open up for public comment. All right, who's got this one?
Yes, that'll be me again, Chair Lane.
We're getting money's worth out of you, Ralph. That's good.
All right, so one on place here, as we see here, it's one and a quarter acre lot in the Orwin A Zone District and is a joint by other low density, single family homes. One year ago in January twenty twenty one, this property owner applied for and received tree protection zone exceptions for three trees. In the plans here, there are trees number nine, eleven and seventeen. If that seems inconsistent with what you saw before, it's because the numbering on the previous application was different, so all tree numbers here are done to be consistent with the current application. And if we look here, you can see trees number nine and eleven are to the front of the house and number seventeen is a coastal redwood along the side here, which we see a little better. View of the trees here. The, excuse me, the homeowner has in the interim decided instead to. Build a new residence on the spot, which would new two story residence with the basement. An existing driveway, detached garage, pool and pool house would remain in place as part of this project. To accommodate this residence, the property owner has already applied for and been approved for a staff level TPZ exception of eight times the tree's diameter. For tree number eighteen, which is marked with the green X here. And they've also received a staff level approval for heritage removal for tree number seventeen that's marked with the blue X in the visual here. That was approved due to the poor form and condition of that redwood tree. In addition to that, the homeowner is seeking heritage tree removals for three other heritage trees. Those are marked with the red Xs here, that is tree number nine, ten and eleven. So a twenty inch redwood, a forty five and a half point two inch redwood and a fifty eight point six inch coastal redwood. The town arborist has reviewed this application and denied the. Tree removals at a staff level because the trees were found to be in good health and condition. That was also supported by an Arbor support that was submitted by Advanced Tree Care conducted in November of twenty twenty one. The details on the condition of those three trees is listed in the staff report, but I'll briefly summarize them there. We mentioned again, good health and condition, good form. And we did, as part of that, the town arborist did not see any conditions for approving those removals. Extending upon that. The town arborist, excuse me. Because she cannot support the true removals and because she could not could not support approval by the planning commission. We met with the applicants in December of twenty twenty one to discuss some alternatives to this project. Those included potentially granting TPZ exceptions for these three trees. Or maybe somebody. TPZ exceptions for these three trees of six X for the main, excuse me, six X for the main residence and eight X for the basement. That would have caused the resident, of course, the applicant to have to accommodate the basement size, but again, we thought it was a reasonable request based on the condition of the trees and the potential to accommodate them. In addition, in addition, let me slip back to our. Site plan here, staff also proposed due to the. Availability of additional space in the rear of the property that the property owner could relocate the pool, which they're proposing to keep in place. Locate the residents further back again in order to either accommodate. Keeping the trees with TPZ exceptions or remaining out of the TPZ zones entirely. Following that meeting, the applicant decided to move forward with requesting the heritage removals. They are here to speak on that a little further, but a few details that I led now. The applicant notes in particular, and again, we note in our staff report that there were forty nine trees overall on this property. Forty of which meet the definitions for heritage street. Those trees are shown here on the site plan along with their TPZ drawn at ten X the tree's diameter. So again, you can see the constraints on building and avoiding less tree spaces. With some minor room in the rear of the property. But the property owner would like to avoid that space, one to keep out of the TPZ zones for those trees in the rear of the property. As well as for some privacy and. Other related concerns intruding on their neighbors. So from here, the planning commission could either deny the heritage tree removal request or they could. Revise or excuse me. Approval requests or prove it with modifications to the project. So against the town arborist is here to speak a little more on. Her review and the decision that was made to recommend denial, but again, we also have the applicant here ready to speak and. Provide a little more detail on their preference for constructing the new residence and removing the trees in order to do so. My time back to you.
All right, thank you. I've got a couple of questions for Sally, but I'll wait if anybody else has any questions. I have specific questions about the radius that's outlined on the map. I guess, maybe I'll start with that just because it will help discussion maybe. Is it on the, on the group of the. Items, items eleven, ten or trees eleven, ten and nine. Is the outer red line here from tree eleven? Is that the root system from tree eleven? The fart, the biggest red line, is that related to tree eleven?
I believe in this visual is prepared by the applicant Charlie, but I believe that red line is actually related to the TPZ for tree number nine. So not necessarily based on. The root locations, but on what the, I believe in eight X TPZ would be for this tree.
Okay, so what's the smaller red line? What's that for?
That is for one of the other trees, so we can, so multiple red lines is because of the overlapping TPZs from the clustered trees and their their varying dimensions. Which leads to different TPZ sizes.
What's the green line relate? What are the green lines related to?
Yes, I'll ask the applicant to confirm in the public hearing, but my understanding is the green line is related to a reduced TPZ for the. Again, trees number nine and trees number eleven.
Okay. All right, and the black line is what?
That would be the ten X TPZ, I believe, for both those trees.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, great. That's all the questions I have for now, but I'll have more in a minute. Anyone else?
Not me. No, thank you.
All right. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing then, and we'll start with the applicants or their representatives, but. Who's up?
Hi, that's us. I'm Mikey Kinler. This is my husband Noah, and I think we're also joined on this call by our architect Kelly Johnson. And so I'll, I'll just spend a few minutes taking you through some of the particulars of the property and we'd love to just have a great dialogue with with the commission about our property. So thank you for for your time. I know I extended an invitation. I hope some of you were able to come and. Great, and see and see our property and and. The circles on this picture probably don't do it justice. We have a tremendous number of trees on our property. As Ralph mentioned, there's. There's forty nine protected and then plenty of others and many of them are in good health and so. Not not meant to challenge that piece of Sally's. Argument at all, but the trees themselves, they were not planted very thoughtfully. They are fairly close to our existing house. And you know, probably our existing footprint is less than a six X. And so when we are thinking about really building our forever home here. And we've already been here ten years and raising our three sons, but we're saying now like we really, we really want to make our roots here and build our forever home. And we're feeling quite compromised by the tremendous number of trees on the property. And so when we thought about it, we said, okay. Where can we build that we're actually having the least amount of. Damage to any potential trees. And so when we thought about the entirety of the project. Not just the specific individual trees, really want to be able to enjoy our property and that's where we get to with taking down numbers nine, ten and eleven. So as, you know, specific to the staff report. We disagree. On the the staff report recommendation. We think it really narrowly focus on focuses on these three trees. And doesn't see the bigger picture of our property. And we think it's quite a unique property and. You know, as we spoke with our neighbors about making this proposal and in fact doing this project. Because Elm Place has had a lot of build over the last several years and so. We approached all of our neighbors on three sides and they wrote in to the commission as well with their support. We really think that the proposal to take down especially nine, ten, eleven preserves their best interest as well as as ours. So when we thought about the consideration that you've made about, okay, do we move the the pool? And emotionally, this is hard, but logically putting cost aside to to make that investment. It would mean for us a smaller pool, a smaller pool deck, moving much closer to our neighbors' properties. And we have power lines that run across the whole back of our property. And so this would be, you know, relocating a pool and a kind of an entertainment area, not only abutting our neighbors. And getting rid of all of our screening trees, which are which are there, they're called the Grove of Trees. There's, there's a very large number of them. That provide all of the shading, so that would mean getting rid of all of that, which we think is a great benefit, not only to our property, but our neighbors. And and just shifting everything back. We also think it's kind of dangerous to to think about a pool deck or a pool under a set of power lines. Even our redwoods that are in the back are topped by PG&E fairly regularly. And so they're, they're in fact the only trees that are not in good health on our property and that's because of PG&E doing their work. So when we step back and look at the and look at the property. You know, our goal was to be able to really preserve the trees that we can, and we actually have also submitted a very thorough replanting plan. Sally had kindly recommended many trees that are not redwoods that seem to do much better as we think about. Climate change and preparing for the future, and so we have recommendations to plant, you know, eight more very large trees. At the at the front of the property, which would help with screening for one of our neighbors and stashing some some more where we can at the rear of the property as well. So that's. That's where we are and we'd we'd appreciate if you would take another look and we're certainly open for for any questions.
All right, Kelly, you want to go next, then we'll ask questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to add just a little clarification on this diagram that. The circles for nine and eleven that you are asking about, so the big black circles. Are for the ten time TPZ for number nine and eleven. And the red circles are the eight times for nine and eleven and the green circles are the six times for nine and eleven. Number ten has just the shows the black circle of ten times and you can see that it barely touches the setback, so I didn't. Add the additional circles because it's such a confusing diagram, so. And I did want to make just one more point to add to Mikey and Noah's. Discussion that they were having there that. I just wanted to read one statement from our own arborist to assess the property, and I think this is a pretty telling statement. He says that there are sixteen regulated redwoods on this property with an average trunk diameter of forty point five inches. As well as many non-regulated redwoods around this and adjacent properties. Redwoods draw a vast amount of water from the ground, which affect the health of adjacent native trees to the landscape. And towns such as Portola Valley are requesting the removal of redwoods to allow for the more. Native trees such as valley oaks, live oaks and the blue oaks, and in fact, our planting plan is for new cork oaks and blue oaks, which were. On Sally's list, so I just wanted to add that in as, you know, sort of thinking about some of the neighboring towns and some of their approaches to the redwood trees. I think that's, that's probably it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
Right, any questions as a commission?
Not for me.
I, the only question I have is, I didn't see a proposed. Plan, some of the sometimes with the proposed plan, I can I can visualize a little bit better. Why the impact? Is there, is a outline on the blue there, the proposed plan outline for the house? Is that what it is?
That's the existing house, the blue line. Oh, yeah, the existing blue line, that's for the existing house and then. You know, this is just a schematic diagram. We didn't really want to go. And do the full planned as we started to see the trouble that we were running into right away trying to get a house to fit, so we kind of left it as just a block diagram.
Right, and the, the biggest issue is because of the impact the this, the. Basement would have on the on the roots, is that, is that what the biggest issue is?
That's correct, that we would like to put a full basement under the first floor and so to do that, I mean, it's very difficult construction to sort of. A smaller basement and then a larger first floor, you still have a tremendous amount of the roots are impacted. You know, it's not such an easy slice down through with OSHA cuts to get the basement in. And so we would like to just go ahead and do the basement under the full first floor, and so that's. Where we really started to see the impact of trying to plan in this space.
All right, great, thank you. Any other, I thank you both, all of you for such a thorough. Outline of what your proposal is. Any other questions before I close the public comment section? Or actually?
Yeah, I have a question for the applicants. So I'm just looking at what's in front of the screen here, what's currently being displayed. I see, I think I see the blue dotted lines, the proposed new structure.
That's the, that's the existing.
That's our existing house, yes.
Okay, the existing is the dotted blue and then everything outside of that is.
The, the concept for the.
Okay.
You can see that the trees as they are, right, to follow the TPZs, they come more than halfway through our current house.
Right, but this is an application for removal, right?
Correct, yes.
So my understanding is that. Based on what I just heard, that the reason for removal. As opposed to seeking an application for reduction of the TPZ. Is that it would not be possible. To construct a basement. If trees nine, ten and eleven remain, is that what's going on here?
Well, we have got a couple of things, yes, that that piece is very much true and the. The first floor plan and attempt to use the property would also be limited. And we're really concerned about just getting, you know, that much closer. Any construction can damage the the roots of the tree and. And and quite frankly, we used to have even another quite enormous and beautiful oak tree. That all arborists told us was extremely healthy in the first month we bought this home, crashed, took down the power lines and took out our garage, so. The the idea of of getting that much closer to to these enormous trees is is a bit unsettling as well.
But typically, when, in many cases, when we see these types of applications. It's removal of a tree because someone wants to build over. But that's not what's going on here, is that right?
Right, our plan isn't saying we want to build over it, but. I'm not sure if I understand your question. Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to build over the existing tree. That would be into the front yard.
Okay, so and just to drill down, one of your concerns that motivates your application is. I think you said one is safety, is that right?
Absolutely.
And then the second one is what, what, what's the second concern that you have?
I mean, we'd like to to have a designer of our house to fully, fully use the property. And when we started looking at all of the TPZs across, like. If you don't touch any of them, you wind up actually with a very oddly shaped, small, small property. And so we looked for, okay, we want to build this this size house, we want to live here forever, we want to have a basement. And make it easier for kids to come back with their spouses in the future. And and then, you know, to have that, to have the square footage on the property, this is, this is where it would go. And be the impact.
And we've already tried to wedge it between other trees, so for one thing, the staff mentioned is tree number eighteen. Is one that we're, you know, we've, we've worked very hard so that we can work with that eight times TPZ there, so we originally, so we've already moved stuff around on the property, there's only. So many places things can go, again, my wife mentioned pushing back gets harder because we have power lines there, which. You know, effectively make that more difficult to use and kind of hit the shading and this is. And this is, this is the jungle game. Um, the reason it's three trees, I think people might have mentioned is they have some intertwined canopy, so we can't just take one of them down. Um, it's sort of, they're all three together.
Yeah, they're clustered in front.
But we've tried to minimize the number as much as possible to just, it's really just one, but it becomes three because of this intertwined canopy. Thank, thank you, thank you, no other questions here.
All right, Nancy, anything? Uh, the questions, any?
No, I, I think I see the picture and I'm forming an opinion, go ahead.
Great, all right, uh, anyone, is there anyone else to speak on this item? Then I'll go ahead and, hearing that, I'll go ahead and, and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. Now, this is interesting, so now I think you were doing your spin class, and I didn't want to bother the person who was motivating you, was, was clearly uh, much more, much more higher RPM than I was.
I, I, I apologize, I, I somewhat zoned out during that, but, but thank you, it's uh.
I was, I was the person walking around taking pictures out in front while you were doing that. Um, so um, I, I, this is a hard one for me from a couple of different standpoints. Um, one, the trees are in the wrong spot for the existing house right now. You know, they're, they're too close, and they're too big, and they're, and they're uh, you know, so it's one of those things for, it must have been a really cute idea, you know, thirty years ago, twenty years ago. That grew into a real problem, so I, I, I'm gonna need Sally. You know, it was either, either Sally or Stephanie or Ralph, I need, I need some guidance on this in terms of the framework. If we were to allow this, just for, just to, for the concept, because as you can see on the, on the map here. It's, it's totally, it's, it's, it's an issue for the existing house, let alone a new, new place. So um, that's, I'm, I'm just looking at it from that standpoint, so we can either answer those questions now or, or hear from other commissioners, whatever the commissioners would want. But I'm, I'm concerned that the, the, the trees are just in the wrong spot for safety and for, uh, for uh, good planning. Uh, even going forward, even for the existing house.
So Charlene, if I could speak first, um, I, I cannot speak to the specific physical conditions of each of the three trees. Um, as intelligently as our town arborist can and probably will, uh, but just procedurally to give you some framework. Um, should the commission want to contemplate um, some of the information that the applicants and their architects share. Um, I would recommend referring you back to what falls on the bottom of page four and into page five of the staff report. In which it lists the municipal code six uh, adopted criteria for decision makers to use in the consideration of any heritage tree removal. Um, and without repeating what Ralph has already um, verbalized in his presentation and noted in the staff report. And perhaps the town arborist will speak to a little bit more directly. It is uh, the town arborist's professional opinion that, given the physical conditions of the site. Uh, based on all of the application information submitted. It is not a per professional opinion that any of those six criteria are able to be found. Thus, the recommendation that the application is not consistent with the general plan and subsequent recommendation of denial. However, it sounds like from what I've heard from, again, the applicant, the architect's presentation. That they're finding that it would be uh, condition two and, or excuse me, criteria two and criteria six of what I mentioned. Um, that their finding would help support their um, request for removal. And without reading them verbatim, it's number two criteria has to do with um, concern of public or, uh, public safety hazard, personal injury, or significant damage to the property. Uh, whereas number six has to do with allowing reasonable use or other enjoyment of property when there's no demonstrated feasible alternative um, to the requested removal.
Right, thank you, that's good framing, and I was like, I was looking at those, trying to, uh, it looked like six for sure, and then two also, yes, good points. All right, uh, uh, Perry, Randy, Nancy, anything on this, uh, anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in quickly here, so um, so I appreciate Stephanie taking us back to the, to the six criteria. Because you, you know, th- those are foundational to, I think, any decision, so. I heard the applicant express two grounds for the application, which Stephanie summarized correctly. So the first one I heard was, it's a safety issue. Um, I don't, I don't see anything in the application that uh, addresses with you. And, but I'll leave it to the town arborist to apply more on that, but I didn't see anything in the application. Um, that would tend to uh, support granting the application based on criteria number two. Um, I, I did also hear from the applicant, the second reason for the application, which amounts to reliance on criteria six. Which is reasonable use. Um, and, and there, again, uh, I don't, I don't think that carries the day in terms of granting the application. But, but I'm happy to hear other opinions uh, from the commission.
All right, Nancy or Randy?
I'm okay.
All right. Randy? Randy, is that, Randy, you're on mute if you're talking.
Sorry, um, so, so having been part of general planet, planning commission here for twenty something years. I generally follow the staff report for a variety of reasons. One, we have um, very capable people here and, and um, they, our, our job is to try and get in and decide what the, the, the outcome should be. Second, we just spent a huge amount of time on trees. I mean, the planning commission, how many meetings did we have on this? I'm not saying for these folks that this is the right thing, the wrong thing, what have you. All, what I am saying though, is that it, it feels to me like there are trees on the site that are protected in the town. And to Perry's point, that it sounds like it's more of a, you know what, we bought the site and then we decided later on. That we would really like to go a different route, but you know, the trees are in the middle of the site. I get it, we, we're, we're developers too, we, we have times like this where we don't get that choice to take these down. Just because they happen to be in a different part of the site where we, you know, than we ever expected, now that we want to build something. So I don't want to sound harsh here, but what I guess I'm saying is, this is one that, that we just spent years doing a tree plan. And to sit and say to Sally, hey Sally, you just told us that we have three really uh, healthy trees or relatively healthy trees. And then say, go ahead, just take them down, I think it's just going to be an onslaught from that point on, if we, if we set this precedent.
Yeah, I definitely see that, I, I, this is why I'm torn. Given the, given the map we have right now, the, the, the current, the current home is, is, would have to, would, if it were, we've rebuilt, we've approved the, the building of the current home. We probably wouldn't go there either, so one, one of the things I'm looking at, when, when I went on the site. I went at the site going, okay, this is, this is pretty straightforward because it's clear these trees are good. When I actually saw relative to the current home and how our towers over them and how close it is. That's where, that's where I started going like, wow, this is like, uh, this is one of those situations where the, the lot was filled with trees. And it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of trees on this property, um, and these, these three are just in the wrong spot. So uh, I, this is where the, this is where for me, the, the uh, two and six override in my mind. Uh, the, some of the other issues, because um, I think we'll be back on this, uh, back on this issue with the, with the trees sometime in the future. Just because of, of some of the issues with proximity to the, even the existing house. But I, I go, I go ahead then, if somebody's ready for a motion. Or, and is Sally, do you want us, do you want to add anything to this?
Um, no, I think it's pretty clear, um, I just know that in previous uh, submittals that we've done, we have done, you have approved basement at a lower TPZ. Um, so it is possible to build a basement that's not the full basement. Um, do you have any questions?
No, but that's, that's the recommend, that's probably the best recommendation since we, it's, it, just for uh, like you know, that, that it's. We've had a long history of preserving trees in the town. And one of the things we've been struggling with uh, is, is how to balance that with, with new development in a way that maintains the character of the town. And uh, and so uh, this would, this would be, and this would be out, out of character in terms of just the face of it with what we've been doing for years. And I've been on the commission for now for ten years. It's just the, the, and the nuance here would be to either slightly uh, change the vision of the house because there is a footprint big enough to do it. And it does lead to more cost of that moving the pool and things like that, or reconsider the size of the basement. So all I can tell you is that, is that uh, it's, I, I understand what your, what your concern was, but uh, we'll, we'll uh, let, let's go ahead and have a motion if somebody's ready to do a motion.
Uh, this is very, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna state the formal motion uh, as recommended. I move that the planning commission find the request for a heritage tree removal. For the three coastal redwoods, trees nine, ten, and eleven, is contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And the planning commission deny the here, the removal permit, one element plate.
There are motion, there's a second?
Second.
Moving the seconded, okay, I'm gonna vote no, but not because I don't agree with the staff work or not because I understand how it fits with the consistency. But just because I think there's a unique, for me, there was a unique aspect on this property when I, when I visited it. But uh, let's go ahead with the roll call, please.
Charlene?
No.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec?
Yes.
All right, very good, all right, uh, so Kelly's gonna earn her money now, try coming up with a new plan. All right, thank you very much, thank you for taking the time, thank you for all your hard work, and uh, I hope it works out for you. All right, with, with that, we're gonna go to item four C, which is the amendments for the municipal code of the historical artifacts. And this one was a, there's a lot of stuff on this one, so uh, I, I hope somebody can dumb it down for me. Go ahead, Stephanie, are you on this one?
I, I am, thank you, Charlene, Stephanie, this is principal planner, and I will try to keep it as um, summary and high level as possible. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation to help walk us through um, the item. And as you mentioned, the full detail is included within the staff report that was publicly distributed. So with that said, um, good evening, and tonight you are being asked to consider making a recommendation to the city council. Uh, that would be considering ordinance amendments to the town's existing historical artifacts ordinance. And re-titling it to historic preservation. So these um, textual amendments before you tonight propose a comprehensive approach to historical preservation within the town. Um, by taking existing regulations that the town already has for historical artifacts. And combining them with proposed new regulations that would pertain to historical buildings. Uh, next slide, please. So uh, just a quick overview of the town's existing historical regulations. So as mentioned, um, the town's municipal code does have an ordinance which includes procedural and regulatory language that pertains to historical artifacts. And those would include such things as statues, fountains, fences, and walls, but it does not pertain to any single family home. The town also has an existing historic artifact inventory, which lists historically designated artifacts. Again, uh, those items that I mentioned previously, that have historic registration associated with them. And lastly, the town's existing general plan does list some other historically designated buildings. Uh, such as the water tower at the park and the Stent Family Hall at Menlo School. But the town has no regulations, policies, procedures, or any other type of language that would pertain to historical homes within Atherton. Um, or, nor, I should say, does it have any such language that pertains to the State Mills Act program, which I'll talk about momentarily. There is one designated, um, historically designated single family home within town, but it is not listed in any of um, the vetted town documents.
Is it Eric's house?
Could be.
Please, uh, next slide, please. So a bit of background as to why we are here tonight, asking for your um, review and consideration. So interest uh, was expressed to staff by some community members. Um, on the historical preservation approach within town specific to historical buildings. And subsequently was discussed at two city council study sessions uh, back in twenty twenty one. So again, just discussion, no actions uh, were taken by the council. To consider possibly expanding the town's approach to historic preservation. Uh, that would also now include historical buildings, as well as address to some capacity State Mills Act law. Um, State Mills Act law also has associated historical property contracts along with it. So I'll give the Cliff Notes version of what the Mills Act program is. So it is an economic incentive program that allows cities uh, within California. To enter into ten-year binding contracts with property owners that have formally designated historic designations on their property. And in exchange, the property receives reduced property taxes during the term of that contract. Um, with the intention that those saved monies are to be slated back to provide um, uh, preservation, maintenance, and restoration of that historical home. So the actual monetary property tax savings are calculated by the local uh, county assessor's office. Um, as part of state law, and the formula to calculate that is uh, established by the State Board of Equalization. And it will vary from property to property, uh, but generally speaking. Um, any historically designated property that enters into a Mills Act contract typically saves somewhere between forty to sixty percent of their established property tax. Um, as included in the staff report, there are attachments of some sample Mills Act contracts that have been approved by other jurisdictions here on the peninsula. Just to give uh, the commission and the uh, community an idea of what an actual historical property contract looks like. So again, um, under the current municipal code, the town has no regulations, no policies, nothing to review any type of requests. Should a property owner, one, have a historically designated building, and two, subsequently want to enter into a Mills Act contract with the town. I was able to confer um, with uh, members of the Atherton Heritage Association. Who back in, I believe it was two thousand and six, um, uh, when the his, town's existing historic artifact inventory was created. Estimated that there could at that time possibly be somewhere between seventy to eighty homes that, within town that may potentially, or could have potentially qualified for historic designation. Although now at this point, um, we don't know for sure if all of those homes still exist. Or what their caliber of um, qualification may, may currently be. Um, next slide, please. So that was a little bit of background and overview, and now I'll get into um, the proposed municipal code amendments. That um, you're being asked to consider and make a recommendation on tonight, so some of the general amendments. Um, as mentioned, the proposed approach was to take the existing regulations within the municipal code pertaining to historic artifacts. And add new similar provisions that would be specific to historic buildings into one new combined um, comprehensive historic preservation ordinance. Just in an attempt at easing both the understanding of historic preservation in town, as well as implementation of it, should it get adopted. So eh, the amendments also propose to create a new town historical registrar. Which would take all of the existing designated historic artifacts and add to it any to be designated historic building in the future. So under the State uh, Mills Act law, a property must first have some kind of historical, formal historical designation at either the federal. formal historical designation at either the federal, state or local level to even be considered for a Mills Act contract. So the proposed ordinance amendments that have been crafted do also propose both a process and required findings should a property in town want to be included in this town's future to be created historical registrar. The process would only be able to be initiated by the property owner and it would require both planning commission and city council review. So the ordinance amendments also further define activities to be conducted to either historic artifacts or to any future historically designated building that would trigger what we're calling a historical alteration permit. The process of which would also be considered by the planning commission. So this process does carry over. There's existing language in the municipal code as it currently reads for historical artifacts that would require planning commission review. I don't, I can't think of any examples that this commission has ever seen. We just don't receive them or haven't received them, at least in my tenure here in Atherton. Activities that would trigger a historical alteration permit would be any kind of major exterior alteration to the historic building, demolition of the building, even partial demolition, relocation, et cetera. It further specifies some minor ancillary activities that would not trigger planning commission review would be exempt, but still subject to a staff level review. And those are limited to activities that could be defined as ordinary maintenance and repair. Next slide, please. So the last major piece of the proposed historic preservation ordinance would be specific to the Mills Act that I previously mentioned and to properties which after first having gone through the proposed process to have their property historically designated and subsequently added to this to be created future town historical registrar. And then subsequently want to request entering into this historical property contract with the town. So these contracts and the language within the ordinance does include all the necessary provisions as would be adequately required under the State Mills Act law as well as adding some additional language to attempt at addressing prior council direction at those two study sessions that were conducted last year. So specifically, the way that the ordinance draft ordinance language is crafted, it does specify minimum submittal requirements and content of these proposed contracts as well as a very important piece of these contracts is every property that requests to enter into one also needs to have an associated 10-year restoration or rehabilitation plan. And what that plan would need to include as part of the agreement that would get recorded against the property would include a schedule, cost details, as well as construction details of the restoration, preservation or maintenance activities that the property is committed in doing within that 10-year contract timeframe. We've also added some language within the ordinance that would require early consultation with the San Mateo County Assessor's Office so that the decision makers yourselves and the council, if one of these applications were to ever be submitted, would know early on what the estimated property tax loss would look like to the town. And lastly, in the attempt at trying to protect any significant financial loss to the town due to the property tax savings that a Mills Act contract allows for. There is language that's been included in the ordinance that would limit no more than five active historical property contracts to be an occurrence at any one time within the town. Or any contracts could not equate to a cumulative annual loss of more than $25,000 at any one time. Again, that, that actual number will vary from property to property based on a series of findings, how old the house is, when the property was purchased and what their established property tax basis, all relative to this very complex formula established by the state and implemented through the county assessors. So the town has no, would have no say in how that number is calculated, but would fall within the purview of the San Mateo County Assessor's Office.
Stephanie, I have a quick question on that then. So is, is the, so, so is the tax reduction required? Like if somebody wanted to be on the registry but didn't care about the tax write-off or tax reduction, but they wanted to have their home included? Is that an option or is it a mandatory thing that once they are in this, they get, they're just part of the program?
No, that would be an option. And that's, that's a great question and I apologize if I skidded over that too quickly. So there is new language in these, this proposed ordinance which would allow a property at 123 A Street to come to the town and request historical designation and to be added onto this again to be created future registrar. Then at that point, if that is approved, there is nothing that would subsequently require that property owner to additionally request a separate process to enter into a Mills Act contract. It's just these, the Mills Act state law requires some type of formal historical designation for a property in order for it to even be considered.
It's not a trigger.
It says, yeah, two, two new processes are proposed in these ordinance amendments.
All right, good. You dumbed it down enough for me. That's good. I missed that. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, excuse me, um, next slide, please. So I didn't have any, any additional talking points, but I am happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. And if there is a decision for a recommendation to approve these amendments to the council, we have put forth on the screen the language should you choose to, to make that.
All right, so any questions of staff before I open up the public comment section?
No.
Yes, I do.
All right, well, hold on. We got it for commissioners first and then I'll open up public comment. You're good. Right. So Randy, Nancy, anything else? All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and open up, go ahead and open up the public comment section. And Katharine, I guess you're, you're up.
Yes. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Katharina Powers and I live at 197 Glenwood Avenue, which is at the corner of Middlefield. And I'd like to support the amendment and I'd like to apply for it. Just love the historic value of the building and what's inside.
All right, very good. All right. Thank you very much. All right, we got it. We got somebody lined up already. All right, thank you. Ken, did you want to speak too?
Yeah, my question is probably for Stephanie. Is there any restrictions on the renovation or or maintenance of the property once it's been designated as historical?
So there, there is language in the draft ordinance that outlines the general structure of what what we're calling this 10-year rehabilitation and maintenance plan would be. So what would happen was if the property gets historically designated and then subsequently submits an application for a Mills Act contract, the way that the ordinance is crafted is that you as the applicant would propose your plan and us as the town in reviewing it would have a licensed historian evaluate the scope of the improvements that would be proposed to make a subsequent determination that such improvements meet what we, what is called the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Buildings. So the criteria effectively is established by the state of California and we would be doing a peer review, so to speak, that making sure the content of whatever work it is that you propose to do falls within those guidelines. So it's not itemized, but it would need to fall within under that umbrella, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And just for the record, could you introduce yourself? So we have it on record.
Sure, it's Ken Glidewell. I live out on Valley Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on the item? I see Charlie down there, but he's on mute. All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate.
Got a question for Stephanie.
Sure, go ahead.
Stephanie, great job as usual. I have a question on, on D, section D 8.14.400 D. Which is the, the five, the limitation of five contracts? And $25,000.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure I understand. The 25,000 maximum cap is across all contracts. So if you averaged it out, it'd be $5,000 per contract.
If each property's calculated savings are, well, I should say reduction to the town was that, but again, they're gonna vary between property to property. So it's whichever, whichever hits first. So there could be, even though we, the ordinance, the way it's crafted says you could have up to five contracts, depending on, say, three properties that come in from Mills Act contract, if that cumulative total hits 25,000, then that would already cap the amount. There could be no further contracts at that point. And that was one of the reasons why we put in the preliminary estimate by the San Mateo County Tax Office. And I actually was able to speak directly to the appraiser who handles all of these for San Mateo County. And she has committed to be able to run those numbers for us so that we, the town, as well as the property owner would know upfront and really kind of save their efforts and times and energies from moving forward if their estimated property tax savings would equate or hit this, this proposed target for the town.
So, thank you. I just, I just wanted to be sure I understand it. Let's say I have $100,000 a year in property tax on property A. And as a result of entering to a Mills contract, my the, the reduction in property tax goes down to $75,000. In other words, a $25,000 saving. Obviously, in that one contract and one scenario alone, that's it.
So it's the actual amount that the town receives from the property tax. So the property tax pie, the town from the county only gets a small sliver of it. So even though in your, in your example, you saved $25,000, we'd have to see what that sliver was that the town got from the established property tax base, which should be various, it's very, very low relative to what it would be under the new calculated property tax base.
Got it. That's very helpful. That was my only question. Thank you, Steph.
Great. Any other questions of the commission?
Yeah, this is Randy. So I'm curious why the town's been, has done the artifact thing numerous times. In fact, I'm not even sure because I've been a, a, a direct litigant with the, with the town. So I'm not even sure if I have to abstain from a vote. And, and let alone the fact that while we don't generally develop in Atherton anymore, it is a possibility. I just have to be careful that I'm not, you know, walking into something here. So I probably need either Stephanie or Lisa or whoever's on the phone to kind of suggest what I need to do. But I guess my, my, until they do that, my two cents is it, it seems like I don't get the, I mean, again, I don't really understand where it came from and I do, there are parts of it I really do like. And I do like the, you know, the, the options it gives homeowners who might be in homes that are, that should have historical protection. It feels like it's just not fully baked. It feels like it needs a lot more information for us. Like, why did they stick at five on, to Perry's prior, you know, question? Why, why a variety of things that all of a sudden if somebody comes along and says, wait a minute, why is there a limit on five? Why can't I get it on number six, seven, eight, nine? Or I just, you know, my thing with, as a planning commission is, let's make it as easy a stat, on staff as possible to make decisions. If they can make it and we can help them, where stuff doesn't need to come to the planning commission, that's great. This just seems like a really complicated formula in the way that it's, it's been presented.
It was really hard to read through and really connect with me. I agree.
Really hard. I, I don't feel like we're ready. Just my two cents, let alone whether I can vote it, vote on it or not. And I make, depending on what I'm told here, it may be that I shouldn't be even talking about it, but it just feels really complicated.
Did, did the, let me follow up on that one from Stephanie. Was it a request by the, by the the council, the town council to look, for have us look into this? Or were they moving ahead on it and thought they should get our recommendation?
That's correct. That's why, that's why I'm here presenting it.
All right, they were, they were moving ahead with it. They said, let's, let's, let's bring it before the planning commission for feedback.
That's correct.
Well, wait a minute, but why are they moving ahead on something that doesn't come to us first?
They can originate it, right? They can originate a request for this.
Yes, and so the prior council discussion again was limited in study session format. So all they were talking about was a go or no, though. Do they want staff to further evaluate it? And the answer was yes.
Okay, so this isn't something that was, okay, so we're, so in other words, we're at the very potentially the beginning of this process. So the question really is, do we, one, does, do any of us really understand it? But two, is it, is it, I mean, how does staff feel about it? I mean, you guys are the ones that have to implement it. Is this, I, I just feel like we're gonna have a hornet's nest of people who feel like they live in, in historically protected homes that should get some kind of a tax advantage. And all of a sudden, it feels like, you know, our new tree issue.
Yes, so if I could through the chair to attempt to answer that question. So the proposed language that's included in the ordinance regarding trying to put a cap or limitation on the amount of contracts slash the amount of annual property tax loss to the town was a discussion point embedded in both of the prior council study sessions and really directed to staff as a safeguard. We at the council level had shared some best practices from various jurisdictions throughout Northern California. And some jurisdictions did have that, again, as a, as a means of financial protection. But if the, you know, if it, well, if the commission decides to move forward with any kind of recommendation to the council, just generally speaking, from the draft ordinance being presented to you tonight, you can make it recommendations for any proposed changes to the language, including removing any kind of cap or limitation.
They had two study sessions on this, right?
That's correct.
They had one and then they had one right before our joint session on December 1st, our second one there.
That's correct.
Yeah, so they've really looked at this thoroughly and I'm, I'm just wondering along, along the lines that Randy's talked about. You know, the, the, the hardest part for me on this is the historical part is one big ball of wax. I mean, that's like, which ones are historic? And what, who's going to enforce the regulation around, yes, that's officially the way an Icler should have been? And, and, or whatever historic element of the house it is. That's one whole big ball of wax. I'm not quite sure how that's regulated by us or whomever it's regulated by. The second part of it is, once that's done, that triggers the possibility of, of this tax situation, which is why they're connected right now. Is that correct? Because if we came up with a historical designation on our, where we're comfortable with by the, by the overview of what the state provides in terms of a program, that would automatically start having us ask, answer questions about the tax. Is that correct?
Well, a property owner would need to voluntarily come forward to the town to, one, request to be added to the town's historical registrar to historically designate their property. That would have to be step one. Or they could go out on their own, as they could do now, and go obtain federal or state local designation and call it a day. There would be nothing that would require them to come forward to the town and notify us as such. What that, what that does is What that, what that does is put themselves in a new category should they ever want to improve their property. There's a separate building code that's specific to just historical buildings that they would then become privy of. So the other, just to pause for a moment, though, if the commission would like more information, more understanding as to the background of the ordinance, any specific provisions or proposed approaches of the ordinance, we can bring it back with additional information if you're feeling like that's what you need in order to make a recommendation to the council. I just wanted to throw that out there as an option as well.
Well, here's the thing, is, is, is the town council ready to move ahead with this? I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to be in a situation where we're not giving them a recommendation when they said, hey, planning commission, what do you want for recommendation? But I'm, I'm feeling like my recommendation would be, you know, it, it took you all two sessions to figure out how, how this felt good. And we haven't had one yet.
Sure.
So, so if, if, if it's not going to be a big problem for their steps, I would agree with Randy that, you know, we need to understand more on this. Because I, I went through it. It was the last thing I read, because I was focusing on the other elements. And then I went through this and I went, whoa, this is, this is deep water. Because the ramifications of this aren't clear to me. There's a lot of aspects of this that are interrelated to a lot of other things that are going on. What's the timeline for the, for the town council?
There, there's no specific deadline or hard and strict timeline that I'm aware of. I do think they'd want to keep, keep it moving along. So again, if I, I've heard so far, what I'm hearing is a better understanding of the ramifications. If a property is one, historically designated, and then subsequently, two, if that historically designated property voluntarily chooses to propose to enter into a Mills Act contract, what does that mean to the town?
And the other thing I would ask is, this, this would not preclude an individual homeowner. If we're moving ahead with the designation on the other areas, then coming back to us when we, when we were, when we had our regulation together, is that correct? So if, if they already applied at the, at the state level or whatever program level they would apply for, if we were to implement something after that, they, would they still be eligible to come back to us or not?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on how, whatever is implemented and how that reads. So if, if a property tomorrow goes and obtains federal or state historic, local historic designation, and then they come in the following day to request a Mills Act contract, that there's no guidelines or regulations that the town has to review that type of request again, so that they couldn't do that, unless there's some instrument in place in the town that allows the town to even consider such a request.
I got it. Which is no different than it is now, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Harry, you had a question?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just throw in my two cents, which is, I, I went through the proposed ordinance. It, it's consistent, for me, it's consistent with what I would expect from this type of ordinance at the level of specificity and generality that you typically see in these things. For instance, eight dot one four dot two zero zero says the city council is responsible for determining whether something is a historical artifact or historical building and so forth, and gives, gives the criteria. So, and I also looked at the Redwood City sample Mills contract, which is something that looks like what I would expect. My only question is, if, if we're going to study this a little bit more and ask Stephanie to come back with us with some more information, my only question mark is, how did we come up with five and twenty five thousand? That's my only question. If Stephanie is going to come back to us with some more information, that's the only area of inquiry that I would ask her to look at.
Yeah, and I can speak to it generally right now. We came up with five in that amount based on prior discussion with the council and estimates of what the actual sliver would be or reduction of that sliver town received monies from property tax.
Okay.
Provide more numbers and give you more examples.
No, no, I mean, it's, it, it's in the discretion of the, of the council. I understand twenty five thousand is relatively modest amount, but that's something the council, you know, is open to deciding on. I was thinking, you know, whether, you know, what does Menlo Park, does Menlo Park have a number? Does Palo Alto have a number? That was my only question. In other words, is the twenty five thousand based on some kind of comparison with adjoining communities? That's kind of one question I wanted to have addressed. But for me, again, for what it's worth, and I do this for a living, unfortunately, the, the ordinance looks what I would expect it to look like.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of homework that went into it. I just want to make sure that, 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 you know, and I'm, I agree with you. I'm comfortable with the way it's all laid out. And Stephanie, you and the staff have done a deep dive on this, much deeper than, than we've had time to cover here. So the other thing about it is, if there were other issues, if we went ahead and made the recommendation to the town council, if issues came up, we could come back and address the issues in the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes. Anytime an ordinance is, if an ordinance gets adopted and becomes effective and then starts to be, and starts to be implemented and additional issues arise, certainly have the ability to go back and make further amendments to the ordinance to address those issues. If I could just, one last comment, piggybacking back on Commissioner Lamb's question about potential conflict of interest. If, if Commissioner Lamb does not have a current project or anything active that would be impacted by this recommendation, you do not need to refuse yourself.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No, no, I didn't. I thought about it earlier and almost reached out to you. And then I thought, well, we'll see where this, what happens. And as I read more and more, I thought, let's just be safe. If I can add, add something to my comment, how, how much community involvement did this get? Did it get a ton? Did it get a little? Did it, I mean, most of the stuff that comes, every, every, you know, that we have some kind of awareness out in the community, or, hey, there was a group that wanted X. I mean, to Perry's point, if he understands it, that's great. And I'm, I mean, that's great, because I, I, and I support that. I, I, I'm fine with it. My only concern is now, all of a sudden, do we create a hornet's nest here where people start going, well, wait a minute, I have mine. Why did we limit it at five? Wait a minute, why do we limit it to twenty five? It's almost like the council said, hey, you know, as long as it doesn't negatively impact the revenue of the town, let's go ahead and look at it. I mean, that, that just sounds laughable. I, I, I just, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I support the historical artifacts stuff. I was on general plan way back when, when, when all of it was done, and we spent years going over it. And I, and I'm, I'm a huge believer. And we have a number of artifacts ourselves. We probably have five or six that we would never do anything with them, other than protect them on our home, in our, in our, in our yard. But I guess all I'm just saying is, it just, it just feels like a bunch of arbitrary things happened. And I, I, if we're going to spend time on it, do we all, are we all, are we just saying, hey, let's vote on it today? And boom, you know, send it back to council. That's really my only thing without really, I mean, maybe you guys have seen this in prior meetings. And because I wasn't at some of them, I missed them. But it, it, it feels like there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, here, here's the thing on, and I'm, this is my issue that I have right now, too, is that it, it seems to me that the historical aspect is being overridden by the tax impact. And I'm trying to figure out how, how we sort of separate those from the, from the logic behind it. Like, there are historically significant homes that should be protected. Okay, great. Oh, yeah. By the way, there's, there's tax implications, too. How do we deal with that? So I'm, I'm sort of inclined, at this point, Stephanie, if we were to continue this session, could we come back with more data for the next meeting? Again, in the, in the, in the, under the guideline of trying not to make your weekends terrible with a lot of homework, how hard is, is it to generate some of the context that you gave to the, to the town council?
Not. I, I mean, since I already have it, and the links, I know they're both of the links that I provided as attachments to the staff report for those two prior council study sessions. I know they're pretty meaty documents, so we can try to extrapolate and dive in a little bit closer to the questions that I'm hearing from the commission tonight. I, I, I mean, I, I think that this one point, though, that I do want to make is that the property tax savings is legally binded to the intent of the historical contract. Again, those monies, they, they, they would need to implement this, this preservation plan that they, I say they, the property owner would come up with. So it's not just money. Intention is not for the money to just to be saved, but for that money to be spent in maintaining, preserving, restoring their historical property. And then, secondly, again, that, it would have to be a voluntary request by the property owner. So you can still preserve a historic property by designating it historic. You then, if they want to do an addition or do some kind of modifications or alterations to the, to their home, and they went ahead and voluntarily got themselves historical designation at the federal, state, or local level, they're subject to the historic building code, which has a different set of building code parameters, right, than, than a new house that's not historic. So that inherently helps preserve and maintain the building itself. It's just that they wanted to add that additional step and request a Mills Act contract, which the town has to approve. That's where the property tax savings comes in. But again, I can give you more detail and more data and information to convey a more clear picture of what the purpose of this process is and what the actual implications would be if the ordinance was adopted and these sort of hypothetical applications are ever submitted to the town in the future.
Yeah, well, all the, I, I mean, the reason I had plowed through the, the documents you provided is it was very thorough. So I don't know how much, other, other than whatever highlight you have on the same documents. I, I'm not sure that we would get more data. And I like Perry's comment about his expertise around it. So I, I can go, I can go whichever, whichever is better. And also, I'm comfortable that the, the town council hashed through this a lot. I mean, I don't know how many hours they spent on this study session, but I know it must have been, it, it was, it was a grind, for sure, based on the documents that you provided. So if anyone's ready for a motion, we can, we could try it that way and, and see, and see how that comes out. Nancy, I don't know if you have anything on this one or not.
Yeah, I, when I look at the formal motion in our literature here, really, all we're doing is recommending that the city council adopt amendments and change the historical artifacts to historical preservation, which I endorse. I think that's a good idea. I'm all for historic preservation. It also points out that there's only one private home in the entire town that even would qualify as a historic property. And if, if our charge tonight is simply to make this recommendation to the planning commission, I'm ready to do that, even though there's lots of unanswered questions. Maybe we want to take another meeting to go over it again in more detail. But really, it looks like it's the planning commission is just going to recommend that the council do all the heavy work. Unless I'm misinterpreting what I'm reading here.
If I may, through the chair, just to address Commissioner Lerner's points, as part of the recommendation of any kind of ordinance amendment, the planning commission does fall within their purview to make specific recommendations or provide specific direction to staff to then ultimately convey to the council. Like, for example, if the commission finds that the proposed language of a limit of five contracts is, is, is not appropriate, based on whatever the reasons the commission may have, make a recommendation with the note that they further recommend that the ordinance be refined to remove the five-year contract or add some other language. That's certainly under the discretion of the commission to do tonight as well.
Well, here's the, here's the fact that would sort of make this a lot easier, Stephanie. If you, if we found out, for example, that, that, on a typical five million dollar house, seven million dollar house, whatever, this that the, the town would lose is five hundred bucks. It means something, one thing. If it's fifty eight hundred dollars, it means something else. Then it brings it back to limiting it to five or, or four and a half or whatever. So if, if that, that data element for me would make it a non-issue, potentially, in terms of the number we could have come forward in a, in, in a period of time, but it would give us the context for where the number came from, the twenty five K, which I think is, is what Randy's been talking about, as well as the actual number of limits. And I can't tell if the limit of five is based on the estimate of what the tax liability would be, a potential, or if it's based on two separate elements, like five sounds like a good number because of whatever we want to process. And twenty five thousand is probably the most we'd want to be out at any one time. So if, the one thing I'm feeling about this is there are so many things that seem like they're connected, but I don't understand what the connection is. Like, why five? Is it because that it leads to twenty five thousand? Or is the twenty five thousand one number, and the five is just like, well, five is our number? So unless you know that, do you know that?
I'm looking right now, actually.
All right.
Trying to get the actual dollar amount.
Eric, let me, let me support what you just said, which is, I think it's redundant. I think, I think we don't need the five. I think if, to the extent that the Mills Act contract is something within the discretion of the council to grant, then it should just be a number, right? It's twenty five thousand dollars of lost revenue to the, to the town. And as a political decision, since the, since the council is elected, it's within, it's within the discretion of the council to, to pick a number, because they're elected, we're not. But I, I would say that if that's the analysis, that it really is a numbers, a revenue number, we don't really need to artificially cap it at five. It's just be a number. Either you come within, it's like when you buy an electric car and get the seventy five hundred dollar federal rebate. It's like, well, am I within the threshold or not? And with, if I am, I get the seventy five hundred dollar tax return, right? So my, my only comment is, for me, and speaking only for myself, I, I'm comfortable with the structure and the wording and the framework of the ordinance. And so I'd be ready to make the, the formal motion. And if, if other folks on the commission are not ready yet, then my only question would be to Stephanie and ultimately back to the town, town council is, one, why do we need a double trigger, right? Five or twenty five thousand? And B, what is the significance of the twenty five thousand? Is it, is it supportable by adjacent communities like Palo Alto or Redwood City or Menlo Park? Those are the only two questions that I would kind of have as a follow-up if the rest of the commission is not ready to jump on board and make the recommendation tonight.
And I don't remember reading anything about the discussion about what, in enough detail about why the twenty five thousand or why the five was developed.
There, there wasn't any.
Okay, good. Well, and I didn't, I didn't forget it. I didn't miss it. It just, I just didn't see it.
So again, that, 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 that amount was what was discussed previously during the last council and actually prior as well, study session, as an amount found to not potentially create a significant financial impact to the town.
And, and was there any sort of math behind that twenty five K? Or was it just because of the limit that we wanted to expose to the town?
Not any deep, detailed quantitative amount. I mean, I can give you an example right now. It, it doesn't give the sliver amount, but it can estimate the property, what the county appraiser gave to me on a hypothetical situation. So in twenty twenty one, gave her a property address, and their current assessment was eight point two million. And if that hypothetical property entered into a Mills Act contract, based on her calculation, again, as established by the State Board of Equalization, the new property value would be three point five million. The new property value would be 3.5 million. So yeah, that equates to a $4.7 million difference, saving the property owner. 57% or $47,000 annually over the course of 10 years. It's pretty complex. Spreadsheets that I'd need to dive into that she prepared to figure out. So say of that 47, so what does that really mean at the end of the year to the town? If the town was getting X under the current assessment, what would they be getting as Y under the Mills Act? It wasn't a lot, I don't think.
It's probably 10%, 10% of that 47. Like five grand.
So again, I mean, if the, if the, I, if the commission wants more. Quali- quantitative data of these hypotheticals and ramifications. What else did I hear? Some local comparisons. I'm happy to bring that back.
So Eric, my only question is. Let's get some comments for what other. If they set any either number of contracts or a dollar figure. That's the only thing I need to know.
Right, I, I agree. And, and or if they, and if they do both. I mean, if they do one or the other.
Right.
Stephanie, you got anything on that?
I was just gonna comment, based on my conversations with the appraiser at San Antonio County Assessor's Office, there really isn't a ton of these contracts. Throughout the county, frankly. There are some, and, and some places have more than others, larger jurisdictions, I think, that have adopted. Historical preservation ordinances. Not all jurisdictions within San Antonio County have one. Either.
Yeah. Well, and the age of some of our homes, though, we might have more than the average, average community percentage-wise.
Yeah, but again, the property owner would need to voluntarily come forward and designate their property asset. So even if. Has potential for historical designation unless that property owner chooses to move forward and do such. It, it wouldn't be designated.
Right, and they'd be asking for a lot of restrictions on the development of their property overall in doing that. All right, well, I'm, I'm, so Barry, I'll go, if you want to make a motion, let's make a motion and find out. I, I'm. I'm. The, the problem, so. There's a, there's a planning aspect of this, which is I like the historical designation characteristic. There's a non-planning aspect of this, which is the revenue part of it. I think that that's not really a planning. A, a planning element. I mean, I don't know of any time we've ever like suggested, well, here's the recommended fees for planning fees. Like that. And what's, what should there be to tax on a property in the community? So. I'm less concerned about the financial limitation that they, that the. That the town council would put on it from a planning perspective. And I'm not worried about the limit of five from a planning perspective. I think it could, could create some interesting questions for the, for the town to answer in terms of where those numbers came from. But, but from. From everything else, other aspect of it, I'm, I'm okay with it. So Perry, if you aren't ready for a motion or.
Yeah, I, I, I think the only motion here, Eric, is we just continue this to the next meeting. And ask Stephanie to get back with us on some things that we've asked for. So if you want, if you want, if you want a formal motion, I move that. At consideration of the amendments to replace chapter dot, chapter eight dot one four historical artifacts. Be continued to the next meeting and that staff. Prepare information as requested for discussion at the next meeting.
All right, I'll second that.
Perfect.
All right. And then just for discussion standpoint, Stephanie, do you have enough? Concept of what we'd need to make it a little clearer for us?
So I'm hearing some local comparisons of other more closely situated jurisdictions. Some more actual dollar revenue amounts as to what that would mean, as to where the specifically the five. Contract. Slash $25,000 maximum limitation came from. Did I miss anything else?
The only other thing, as long as you're doing it, would be to come up with any. Any known case scenarios that were either created some difficulty in terms of the process for, for a community. Whether it was getting, getting the authorization, you know, working on the, the fact that it really was being preserved. What, if there's any issues with this, one of the things that always comes up in these is, okay, here's the regulation. Does anybody care? And is it, are they doing it just for the tax write-off? And so, you know, if you're, you're saying you get them because you are going to do this, how do I know you're actually doing it? And if you don't, what happens to you?
Right, so we do have some language, okay, I can come back with that. If there is language in the draft ordinance that gives the town some administrative capacity. Should the contract terms of their maintenance plan not be implemented?
Right. Yeah. So anyway, and again, you've done so much homework. Don't reinvent the wheel on this. Just give us some more. Edge information, I think, that'll make it so that we're making a recommendation that we're, we're comfortable with.
Sure. Okay, with that then, I believe I'm at the point where I can take roll call on that motion that was made.
Yes, and then also that, that'll be re, one of the other things I like about this, the study sessions that the town council had did not have open. Community input and ours will allow two sessions for that community input if it's going to come forward, which I like a lot, which addresses one of Randy's. Points or making sure that we're getting a community input.
Yeah, through the chair, they were, the study sessions were conducted in a public meeting type form. It wasn't a public hearing per se, but a public meeting. So there was public input given at those meetings. As well.
All right, good. All right, then we have a motion and I have, I seconded. Roll call, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
You're on, you're on mute, Randy. Randy, you're on mute.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm trying. Is that good?
Yep.
All right, there we go. Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Naronset.
Yes.
All right, all right. Stephanie, thank you for your hard work on this one. There's a lot, there's a lot there. You know, now the next item on the agenda is item 4D, which is the, the amendments to the, after the municipal code establishing. The direction on SB nine projects in the community. Let me, let me just frame this up a little bit. I, I don't, there's a couple of people who are online that are from the community, it looks like. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. We had a joint session with the, with the town council in December where we went over the, the realities or the known realities on. SB nine, which is a, which is a, a new law that is implemented right now, that's already in place. That has this, that is directing communities to allow certain divisions of property or additional units on a property by rule. Basically, if a person comes forward and says, I want to do this, we can't say no. And so we had, we had a good discussion on the commission about the ups and downs of that and also some of the issues with it. But tonight, what we're trying to do is frame up, since this is a law. And since this is something that the community has to deal with, how do we best make it land for, for the appropriate. Approach we want to take in Atherton for this new law. So it's not a matter of whether or not we can change the law right now. The things we have to do is provide some kind of framework for staff. So that they can accept whatever request they have for, for changes to the, some, some property line or property units. Such that they can have guidelines, they can say, yes, this is how we do it in Atherton. Right now, we don't have that. They come forward, it sort of falls to whatever the, the, the broad sense of the, the state regulations are, which is, which is. We can, we can affect the way it lands with the community. So that's what we're talking about tonight. And there'll be a lot of discussion around that and we'll have a, an open public session about it. And that's, let's just make sure that we're, keep in mind that. This is something that's real for us, so we have to make it as good a reality as we, we want to shape for the community. With that, Lisa, are you the one on this one?
Yes, thank you for the introduction, Chair Lane. Now go ahead and share my screen, start the presentation.
All right. And we'll do it through the same procedure that we have on the other end, for those of you just joined in, we'll go through a, a discussion, an overview with staff. And then we'll have questions from the commission to staff, then we'll open up the public comment section. And we'll sort of make sure that we all know that we're trying to target for around three minutes a piece for the people presenting. And then we'll bring it back to the commission to, for discussion and action as appropriate. So with that, Lisa, we'll, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Lisa Costa Sanders, Town Planner. I'll be presenting the draft ordinance implementing SB nine. As the chair indicated, SB nine or Senate Bill nine went into effect statewide on January 1st of this year. These regulations are mandatory for all jurisdictions in California. The planning commission and the city council held a joint study session on December 1st to review this new legislation. Planning staff, together with the city attorney's office, drafted the ordinance based on council and commission feedback and in compliance with state law. As the regulations are currently effective, any eligible parcel may now apply for lot split or add an additional unit using the provisions of the state law SB nine. So the intent of the draft ordinance is to prepare a framework for evaluating SB nine applications. Comply with the requirements of state law and maintain the existing spirit and character of the town to the extent feasible. So let me just go over what the ordinance provides in compliance with state law. Eligible parcels may be split to create two parcels of approximate equal area. Each parcel shall be equal to at least 40% of the lot area, the original lot area. Parcels shall be split approximately perpendicular to the longest contiguous property line, so splitting it just about. The front parcel line shall be the line closest to or parallel to the public road that serves that property. Flag locks. Are allowed and have, need to have a minimum accessory of 20 feet in width, and that's consistent with our current regulations. And separate, separate utility meters are required for each parcel. So that's relating to lot splits. And then for new units. So with each parcel, then, you would be allowed to have an, an existing primary dwelling unit. You can add one additional SB nine dwelling unit. You could have two SB nine dwelling units on the parcel. Or you can have the primary dwelling unit as well as an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. So this allows two units per parcel maximum. And what we tried to do with the new regulations is to craft them in a way that would incentivize property owners to build. The dwelling units in accordance with the current town development standards. So if the dwelling unit complies with the current setbacks. Then they could utilize the current floor area standards and the current height limits. Alternatively, for developments that do not comply with the current setback requirements within that underlying zoning district. Or developments that retain the existing main residence and construct a new SB nine dwelling unit on the same parcel. They would be limited to a maximum floor area of 800 square feet per dwelling unit. And limited to the maximum height of 16 feet for each primary dwelling unit. And then they could apply that minimum side and rear setback of four feet that's defined in state code. So what we're trying to do here is incentivize people to build to our current setback requirements, which if you just took. Let's say a half acre lot, so a one acre lot, and they were to split that, let's just say in half. Then that would look like about a 30-foot side yard setback. And then you could build up to the 30-foot height limit and build an approximate. 4,500 square foot residence. Alternatively, if you wanted to have reduced setbacks, and then you would apply the minimum four foot. Maybe you built to 20 feet or 10 feet side yards, then you'd be limited to an 800 square foot dwelling unit and 16 foot in height. So it doesn't really, what we're trying to do is incentivize you to meet current setback requirements. And we can come back to that if you want. So the, the code also has the provision that if you were to have the two dwelling units kind of attached or configured like a traditional looking duplex. You would need to have a solid one-hour firewall between the units, as well as a deed restriction that our city attorney would prepare. That would require one of the units to be rented and it could not be sold separately. We've added some additional requirements as well. So this would apply if you had two units on a parcel. So this is in addition to our current regulations. So the underlying zoning regulations would apply, like our dormer provisions and our other setback requirements. But in addition, for two dwelling units, we would add the requirement that they have a screen location for trash and recycling receptacles. Transformers or any other above-grade equipment needs to be screened from the public view. And exterior building and landscape lighting also directed downwards and shielded light source. And then no uplighting of trees or permanent lighting within trees. And then the additional requirements is that. Once you've used this SB nine lot split provision, you cannot use it again. So it's kind of a one-time-only situation. And then also if the adjacent parcel was doing it by the same property owner, they couldn't buy the property next door and also do a lot split. And then the property owner that's utilizing the provisions of SB nine must live in one of the units for at least three years. And sign a restrictive covenant to that effect. So it's hard to say how many applications we're going to receive. It feels more likely that, you know, we're going to see lot splits. And not necessarily kind of the duplex scenario of adding an additional rental unit on the property. But for planning purposes, we're thinking we may see five a year. And so that would result in about 40 new units towards the town's regional housing allocation requirement. And our current requirement for the next eight-year planning cycle in the housing element is 348 units. SB nine may be utilized on properties that contain an older residence currently. So we did an inventory and there's 606 parcels in town that are greater than one acre an area with a main residence built before 1970. And then a bit more, 687 with a residence built before 1980. So it seems more likely that somebody would be interested in maybe turning those over and doing a lot split on those properties. But we have seen kind of traditionally in town, the most financially viable option is for property owners to maintain their existing single-family. Condition and kind of maintain those estate plots. So it's kind of, we'll see how many of these we're going to see developed. So the next step is planning commission consideration, the recommendation to the city council. You could provide some additional consideration edits or amendments that staff would be happy to carry forward to the city council. For council's adoption. Given that SB nine is already effective. We would prefer move this ordinance forward to the council with your edits that we can incorporate at that council meeting. Rather than continue it for planning commission, you know, additional reviews. But it's really up to the, to the planning commission. I think we're just concerned about. Implementing the state law without having the town's code in place. So we'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions and the assistant city attorney has also provided a lot of guidance on this as well. So. We may defer some questions to him. That concludes staff's presentation.
Great job on this, really outstanding and a really good turnaround time, too. I had one question on the one parking space required. Could we add minimum ones, one parking space required? And the reason for that is I want to open the door for somebody having a secondary unit with two, with two. A two-car garage, for example, and I, I just felt like minimum would make it sort of a push that way. Because one of the things I'm, one of the things I'm really worried about is what I see down in LA. Is everybody goes, makes their ado and then parks on the street. And, and all you do is drive past cars parked on the street because everything's, everything's used for a living unit. So I don't, it's not a big deal, but it's just another thing to open up the concept. That's the only change I saw.
Okay, thank you.
Randy?
Yeah, I didn't really have a comment on it, other than I see this going, I, I get emails all the time now from different cities. We've got to stop this, we've got to do this. I, I like this approach in terms of. Setting up some guidelines much more than a lot of the cities, which, which in this, in our particular case have much smaller. Land parcels, so I can see why they're doing it that way. I, I like the idea of guiding this versus not. Unlike the last item that was on our agenda, this one feels like it's baked. It feels like you guys have an idea of what you're. What the council wants, what you want to see. I, I don't technically have a, an issue with it. And, and especially knowing that as a. And and especially knowing that as a town, there's a preservation element relative to the way we want to see these these land parcels planned, so I I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and I like the fact we have something in place. I I this is gonna, as you know, Randy, this is gonna be a rolling discovery, right? Because the combination of legal contests in certain communities, as well as better definition by the state, as well as developers saying, hey, wait a minute, we thought it meant this. It's going to be, it's going to be a whole village that helps to find the outcome on this, for sure.
Yeah, and and I appreciate that comment, because we we will most likely be back with some future amendments as the law is continually refined at the state level. Yes.
So I want to amplify, Eric, one of the things that came up in in what you just said, which is street parking.
Yeah.
And and man, I I hate street parking. I don't care what part of that you live in. So so there, this may be the subject of a different legislative action. Or maybe it's something we could include in here, and this is the question for for Lisa and Stephanie. But boy, I I don't want my neighborhood turning into a parking lot where people are taking advantage of this law. So is there, first question, number one, is, is there anything in our ordinance that can be modified without violating the statute that would restrict street parking as a result of taking advantage of SB 9? That's the first question.
Yeah, and I may want to refer to the city attorney, because my understanding is we have public streets that are available for street parking, and we would have to somehow restrict those townwide or area-wide. And we could not just restrict them to an SB 9 parcel, but I'll defer to the city attorney.
Correct, Lisa, that that's exactly right. Any requirement like that, we would have to make generally applicable. We couldn't just focus it on these SB 9 projects. So we'd have to look at parking, street parking more holistically throughout the town.
Okay, and that's, so I don't have, I I will not propose any discussion on that for the purpose of this ordinance. But is it true, Andres, that Menlo Park has a provision on overnight street parking?
I'm I'm not familiar with their parking restrictions. I think Lisa and Stephanie might have a better sense of that.
Lisa, Stephanie?
I don't know Menlo Park specific, but I know some jurisdictions have regulations against overnight parking, and sometimes that's occurred due to concern about kind of commercial vehicles being stored, or people using it for RV parking and for sleeping. So some jurisdictions have limited it for that reason, or there are specific limitations relating to street sweeping occurrences. But again, that would need to be looked at more townwide.
Lastly, on that, I think those limitations are also applicable to specific zoning districts, and most of the time, those are mixed-use and are commercial or industrial-type districts versus a single-family residential zoning district.
Okay. Where I'm familiar with those more generally, they tend to have some kind of a permitting scheme for for residents. So where we're trying to restrict residents overnight parking on streets, that seems like it would not be the most ideal tool to use.
Okay, so with that, I I don't have I I don't have any comments on the presentation, including the provision here that says that I guess if you live within, is it a certain number of feet or yards or miles of public transit, you don't need separate parking for an SB 9 unit, correct?
And that's defined by state law, correct? It's one-half mile walking distance.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I I don't have any other comments.
All right, good. Nancy, before I open public session, do you have any comments, questions of staff?
No, I don't believe I do, thanks.
All right, very good. Then I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section, and we'll hear from anyone here that would like to make a comment. I see Betsy and Mike and Ken and Michael. Anyone, any, anyone want to come off mute and be heard? All right, going once, going twice. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Must have been a slow night on Netflix, huh? All right, then we'll go ahead and any comments, staff? I I'm, I really am super happy with the, with the idea staff came up with on this. It's the things we talked about in the study session was trying to make sure we're incentivizing something rather than disincentivizing something. And by doing that, we're probably going to have a better luck preserving the nature of the community as a result. So I'm I'm very comfortable with the starting point. I I'm on a highlight, this is the starting point. Anyone else?
I I think I'm fine with it, too.
Nancy, anything?
No.
All right, Perry?
I always agree with Randy.
Say the reverse.
You realize this is going to be important. Ralph, make sure that goes on the minutes. All right. I I I can make the motion if you want to.
Yes.
All right, I move that planning commission recommend the city council adopt the ordinance for the regulations and objective standards for the urban lot splits and development projects pursuant to the Government Code, Section 65852.21 and 66411.7, SB Senate Bill 9, based on the findings and for the reasons outlined in the staff report. Randy, seconds. All right, we have a roll call. Any any comments before we go on roll call? Roll call, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
All right, very good. That was, that was the one I thought would, could be longer. I thank you, Lisa, and send us the bill. All right, I I remember five of staff reports, anything coming up, Stephanie?
No, your next regularly scheduled meeting will be February 23rd, and we'll have a couple items.
Yeah, and plus, we'll have a continuation of one, right?
I I did not get a continuation to a date certain.
All right, let's, let's go, let's make that, let's make the motion, yeah, let's go, let's go back. I'm going to go back then to item.
My motion was the next meeting, continue next meeting.
Okay.
All right, is that all right?
Yes.
I think that was his motion, by the way, the original thing he brought up. All right, so is that, is that giving enough time?
Yes.
All right, all right, then, anything else on the staff report?
Yeah.
All right, and commissioners' report, anything on that? It's been a slow month for commissioner reports. All right, then, item seven. I need a motion to adjourn, and I think Stephanie's ready for this.
I moved, I moved. Yep.
Nancy, seconds?
Yeah, I'll second.
What are you brokering, what are you brokering motions now?
I can see you're twitchy. Roll call, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
And Commissioner Naronset.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. Everybody have a great Valentine's Day, and we'll see you a week afterwards.
In February.
Hopefully there's candy.
Good meeting. You're getting better at these, Eric. Good job.
Year 10, you know, took a while. All right, talk to you all later.